The 49th regular session of the 7th City Council for the year 2024 is now called to order. Please rise for the opening prayer to be led by Honorable Kobe Kapinha, followed by the National Anthem, Provincial Hymn, and City Hymn.
A moment of silence as we put ourselves in his presence in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Lord, as always, we thank you, God, for all the blessings that we have received from you. We thank you, Lord, for the gift of life, the gift of good health. We thank you for everything. And today, as we are having this session, we ask your presence and guidance as we tackle things to benefit the people of Mati, God. Continue to be with us always. Continue to bless us with good health and a good relationship within this council. We thank you and we offer all the thanks and all the thanksgiving through you, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
Leading the prayers, I know, the Spirit.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Secretary, you may proceed with the roll call.
Honorable Samuel Rodriguez, absent excuse. Honorable Delphine Miones. Honorable Tara Marie Rabat-Gaita. Honorable Selena Princess Campos. Honorable Idwanda Pang Junior. Honorable Abilino Kapinha Junior. Honorable Armand Valera. Honorable Sandra Paul Alcantara. Honorable Jerome Dang Hirang. Honorable Roelio Pabio. Honorable Bodilyum Miones, absent excuse. Honorable Daniel Makaobos. Honorable Tomas Sebileeno, on official travel attending PCL activity. Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat.
Present. Corum, Mr. Chair. Thank you, please proceed with the next item.
Reading and consideration of the previous minutes of the regular session dated November 26, 2024, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Are there any corrections with their previous minutes? If there are none, Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
If there is no proposed amendments or correction to the minutes, therefore, I move for the adoption of the said minutes dated November 26, 2024 during the 48th regular session of the 7th City Council. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the adoption of our previous minutes dated November 26, 2024. Do any members second this? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, the previous minutes are adopted. Please proceed to the next item.
Four question or no guests invited, privilege or other reports, observations.
Thank you for today's session. Before we proceed to privilege or, we have invited three organizations that want to perform their Christmas carol. So before they step in, may I ask Honorable Miones to first request for the suspension of house rules.
In order to cater our guest, I move for the suspension of the house rules. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the suspension of house rules. Do any members second this? Seconded by all the members. The house rules are now suspended. (Clerk) 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 The first group are the Casadya Mandaya, headed by Mrs. Morales. Ma'am, welcome, sa among 49th regular session. (Clerk) 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 Morning. (Clerk) 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 Thank you so much to the Casadya Mandaya. Ma'am, pasig pwede na magpabilhin for a photo opportunity, but kung paano among councilors. The next caroler, we have the Mati Running Community, led by Madam Happy Engok.[1105.74][1105.74](Applause)
(Clerk) 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 We are the Mati Running Community, wishing you all a Merry Christmas. And a Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you so much, the Mati Running Community. May you request for a photo opportunity, picture, for the councilors.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Baba Itey, thank you.
May kindly settle down. We are still under suspended house rules. Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move for the lifting of the suspended house rules.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the lifting of suspended house rules, seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, the suspended house rules are now lifted. Privilege are is upon us. Are there any reports, observations, requests by the members? Honorable Campos.
Mr. Chair, Communication Number 407. This representation would like to ask if this communication be tackled under unassigned business with suspended house rules, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. There is a request by the Honorable Campos that... (Cough) Communication 407. Certified urgent be tackled under unassigned business without the need to suspend house rules. Should there be no objections, kindly take note, Mr. Secretary.
Properly noted, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I believe there are no other requests under privilege or. If there are none, please proceed to the next item.
No proposed ordinance for first reading, no proposed resolution for first reading. For communication and messages, Communication Number 406 Series 2024. Letter from Mrs. Evangelina Uwi Plaza, Assistant Secretary of San Jose Pandalabigan, Office in Charge, addressed to San Jose Panglongsoo, Mati, to our City Vice Mayor, Honorable Lorenzo Leon Girabat. Regarding Resolution Number 17-1114-111124 entitled "A Resolution Confirming the Validity of City Ordinance Number 617 Series of 2024, San Jose Panglongsoo of Mati double Oriental", considering that the same is within the prescribed power of San Jose Panglongsoo, subject to Section 123 of Republic Act 7653 as implemented by the Banco Central of Pilipinas, Circular Number 402, and other laws and regulations pertaining thereto. For the information of the honorable SP members, Communication Number 407 Series 2024. An urgent letter from Honorable Michelle and Rabat, our City Mayor, dated November 26, 2024, addressed to the honorable members, San Jose Panglongsoo, requesting the honorable San Jose Panglongsoo to pass a resolution authorizing the City Mayor to sign for and behalf of the City Government of Mati, the memorandum agreement between the National Authority for Child Care and the City Government of Mati relative to the implementation of Philippine Foster Care Program. Refer to the Chairman Committee on Social Welfare and Community Development, the honorable Campos. As manifested by the honorable Campos, this will be discussed under unassigned business without need of suspending the house rules. And last communication, Mr. Chair. Communication Number 408 Series 2024. Administrative Order Number 05 Series of 2024 from Honorable Michelle and Rabat, City Mayor. With the subject matter prescribing guidelines for early dismissal at 4:00 p.m. every Wednesday and Friday to promote mental health, wellness, and productivity among government employees. For the information of the honorable body. For committee report, none calendar business. For unfinished business, we have one urgent communication, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. To properly facilitate this, Honorable Miones is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In order to address the urgent request of the local chief executive, I move for the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body into a committee as a whole. Do any members second his motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, we are now converted into committee as a whole, and honorable Campos is recognized.
Mr. Chair, the floor is now open for a discussion of Communication Number 407 Series of 2024, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. The floor is now open for any discussions regarding Communication 407 as presented by the honorable Campos Moa between the LGU and the National Authority for Child Care. Are there any? If there are none, please proceed.
I now move for the adoption of the committee as a whole recommendation, Mr. Chair. Do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the honorable Campos for the adoption of a committee as a whole recommendation for the said communication. Do any members second her motion? Seconded by all the members. Since there are no objections, this motion is carried. Honorable Miones is recognized.
I move for the conversion of this body back to plenary.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Miones for the conversion of this body back into plenary. Is this seconded by all? Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, we are now back into plenary, and honorable Campos is again recognized.
Mr. Chair, I now move for the passage of the resolution authorizing the local chief executive, the honorable Michelle and Rabat, to enter into and sign for and in behalf of the City Government of Mati, a memorandum of agreement with the National Authority of Child Care relative to the implementation of the Philippine Foster Care Program. Mr. Chair, this is the new resolution actually adopted. Also, other municipalities and cities already have this, Mr. Chair. Para ni sa katung na i-gusto mag-adapuhon og mga bata darias atong siudad, pwede na mag-help, mag-facilitate at tong siudad, mag-prepay taog at least ten kabook na potential parents na nangita og ka'tong mga adapuno na bata. And then pending sila, naka-line up ang atong ten, and then pag na i-child na moabot, pilian or screening sila kung kin sa tong feasible na mamahimong amahan og inahan pohon. So katong mga wala'y anak or na ay mga anak pero gusto magdugang paong mga anak na mag-adap, na anatay tsansa na magkaanak, o siyempre katong mga bata na wala'y amahan og inahan, na anapoy tsansa na magkaamahan. Na anapuy tsansa na magkaamahan og inahan, mabutang sila sa maayong na balay, Mr. Chair. I now move for the adoption of this resolution, Mr. Chair. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Campos for a passage of resolution. Members to second her motion. Seconded by all the members. If there are no objections, this motion is carried. Yes, Honorable Dayang Hirang. Kung blue ang eyes sa baby ing na ko, kay magpalistapod ko. Anyway, please proceed to the next item, Mr. Secretary.
For business party for second reading, none. No proposed ordinance for third reading. Announcement, other matters?
Thank you. Are there any announcements or other matters by the members? Later, do you want to discuss it now? After na lang. Let's discuss our Christmas party later after this session. Other announcements? If there are none, please proceed to the next item.
Adjournment filed by closing prayer by the Honorable Abilino Bacarez Capinha Jr.
Honorable Capinha is recognized. Saan naman si Dr. Bacarez, councilor?
Angyahang papa, first classin sa kuang mama, vice.
Ah, mama?
Bohol, bohol. Thank you. Mr. Chair, I now move for the adjournment of today's Regular Session until December 9, December 10, 2 o'clock in the afternoon. I do so move.
Thank you. There is a motion by the Honorable Capinha for the adjournment of today's session, seconded by all the members. Session adjourned. Please rise for the closing prayer.
In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. God, as we close this session, Lord, we want to give you, we want to give honor to you. Thank you, God, for the time we had today to discuss issues and make decisions. May you bless each person who took time to gather here today and let your hand of protection be on them throughout the rest of this week. This we ask through Jesus Christ our Savior, amen. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you. Sorry na pa i, one announcement. Mag-record daw ang city events o Christmas greetings natin as a whole, but we're not complete. Masig pwede next session? Okay ra? We're not complete. Okay ra, next session na lang. Ay, ako infor sila in advance para complete ta. And then for the SP Xtras Party, I want to get your suggestions. Kung okay sa tanan, ang venue para apolitical, sa Adelina Hotel na lang, sa taas, sa Alfredco area, December 10, 6 o'clock PM. Okay ta? Tuss, sen?